Start on time so we can end on time. We'll do this the way we always do. We'll do the invitation followed by a pledge. I'd like everybody to please stand. Thank you, dear Lord, for another opportunity for us to come together to do the business of the county. We pray for patience and wisdom and guidance as we go through this budget and all the items contained therein. And we ask for knowledge of your will and the power to carry it out. And all these things, we pray in your name. Amen. Attention to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This is the fall planning retreat. We have the agenda and everybody has the book with them. Like always, this is an informal type venue. So if you have a question, just jump right in and ask it. But I would ask you to hold your questions until the presenter finishes because most of the time, the presenter will answer the question before the presentation is over. And with that, I will turn it over to a Mr. Administrator for an overview.
Well, thank you. It's a privilege to be here with you and we're grateful to be able to share these plans and suggestions that we've got as we begin the 2027 budget process. And you may remember that we've had a lot of discussion already about 2027 because as we were going through the 2026 budget process, we did reach out and had some discussion about what we wanted to see for not only '26 but also for '27. And I think everything that we've talked about up to this point still will hold true. So we have the capacity, I think, to get into the 2027 year without a tax increase, but still have the ability to add, I think, the necessary personnel. It won't be as much as we would like, but also have the opportunity to do something meaningful for our employees in terms of raise. So as we work through, we'll at least start those discussions today. And just remind you, as we're here during the meeting to facilitate the minutes and so forth, if you would, press your speaking button here, the green button or the button that turns green, just to make sure everybody's comments are on the record in that regard. On our agenda today, we will be looking at the unaudited financial update for 2025. We will do a strategic plan update as well as go over what we see as the issues from a growth and service level needs, which is traditional for what we do at this time that sets the stage for that budget process. There are three actions that we would desire council to consider this afternoon. The first is just a resolution in support of the strategic plan that you will hear here shortly. The second is a resolution to adjust the millage rate for Eagle Trace Special Tax District. And we will go into some details of that based on the community meeting that was held and a meeting of the commissioners who are recommending a specific action to council. In addition to that, there's a third item which is just mandated or necessitated by the timing required by the state. It is a change to the business license ordinance and it solely addresses the codes that each business is assigned. The state now promulgates that list and which businesses are in which category. And you may remember, we have categories one through seven and a few extra add-ons to that. And the lowest price is at category one and the highest price is at category seven based on each business and theoretically the profitability related to those businesses. And now the state actually is the one that decides which businesses are in which category. And they update it every two years. And every odd year is the year that we need to adopt the state changes. So that's what this ordinance does solely, just for convenience sake. We need three readings before December 31st. Today would be the first reading. And at your November meeting would be second and December meeting would be third. So that's why that action is on this agenda. It was reviewed and recommended by the administration committee previously. And that will lead us to our financial update.
Good afternoon. So we're going to start things off with a review of our fiscal year 2025 financial results. I will mention that these are unaudited figures, so they could change because we're still going through our audit. And there's a lot of numbers, so just bear with me. So starting with our general fund for 2025, we had revenues of $299 million. This exceeded our budget projection by $25 million and exceeded prior year by $28 million. Expenditures for the year were $242 million, which is $25 million less than the budget. Other financing sources and uses were $15.5 million, which is just under budget, resulting in an addition of $42 million in fund balance for the year, leaving the general fund fund balance total at the end of fiscal year 2025 at $202.9 million. Looking at revenues by category for the general fund, we saw the largest increase in property taxes at $11.4 million and interest income at just over $7 million. We also had a large increase in EMS fees at almost $2 million. Looking at expenditures by category in the general fund, personnel services were under budget by $10.4 million. We also saw savings in contractual services and supplies and materials totaling just over $12 million. So moving to special revenue funds, looking at the fire fund, we had revenues of $45 million, expenditures of $42 million, and a net change in fund balance of $4 million. For the road maintenance and CTC funds, revenues were $25.3 million. Expenditures were almost $23 million, resulting in a net change in fund balance of $2.6 million. Our beach re-nourishment fund had a net change in fund balance of $2.4 million. Looking at the stormwater fund, we had revenues of $18.3 million and expenditures of $13.3 million with a net change in fund balance of $4.3 million. For the recreation fund, we had revenues of $11.6 million with expenditures of $7.8 million, resulting in a net change in fund balance of $331,000. And finally, in the waste management fund, we had revenues of almost $22 million, expenditures of $13 million with a net change in fund balance of $5.5 million. To summarize the governmental funds, we see the general fund here adding that $42 million that I mentioned in fund balance for the year with an ending balance of almost $203 million. CIP used $8 million in fund balance for existing projects, bringing the ending balance to $134 million. Dropping down to hospitality projects, they added $16 million for an ending balance of $141 million. Special revenue funds, which include fire, recreation, emergency telephone, waste management, and stormwater funds, added $20.8 million in fund balance for an ending balance of almost $196 million. Our capital funds, which include impact fees, added $7 million fund balance with an ending balance of $30.5 million. And debt service funds added $3 million to their fund balance to end the year at $15.4 million. So overall, we had added $165.8 million to our fund balance to give our total governmental funds an ending fund balance of $1.4 billion. Lastly, we wanted to show a breakdown of unassigned fund balance for the year for the end of the fiscal year. For general fund, after setting aside our reserves and commitments, we have an unassigned fund balance of $69.2 million. Fire fund ended the fiscal year with an unassigned fund balance of $11.7 million. Recreation fund was at $5.3 million. Stormwater fund was at $6.4 million. And waste management fund ended with an unassigned fund balance of almost $11 million. So that is a quick look at the FYI 2025 unaudited financials.
I'm just a little confused by the rec fund budget. If there's a...
So there was a reduction in their fund balance for the fiscal year because in the 2025 budget, they were transferring, I think it was $3.5 million roughly to capital because they funded the new rec center offices there on 701 that have been purchased and will be renovated for their purpose, as well as to some of the other capital needs they had.
An expansion of capital projects, is that in our CIP or would that be come from the rec fund?
It was in the CIP, but it is funded by the rec fund.
So is the rec fund in trouble or...?
No, sir.
Okay.
That was planned and anticipated because they had excess from the previous year.
Okay. I just want, I know we've got some pretty lofty plans for expansion of services.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure we're able to do that.
Well, I would say this, their plans, we don't have enough money to finish everything they want to do at the moment. But we are well on the way to, I think, achieving what they have in the CIP.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Question on the CTC. Did I catch that was $25 million to go through CTC? Ballpark. And I guess the tricky question is, does the CTC committee, are they the ones that delegate all of that money? Or are they just delegate part of...?
No, that 25 was CTC and road fund combined. It's not solely, CTC usually leave half to a million a year or something like that.
And that's all, that committee?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One more question. What, if anything, are we doing with the unallocated fund balance? Or is it unallocated on the Ride Two and Three programs?
Well, Ride Three fund balance, that is there, that's revenue collected in advance of spending on those projects. Based on the current estimate, I think we received, and David, you may have those numbers, 825...
Eight hundred and twenty-five, eight twenty, upper eight twenty-four. I think it was, that money is collected and is actively being spent and we will use all of it for the Ride Three projects. For the Ride Two, that's 76 million, I think it was. Forty-five million of that, I think we loaned proactively from the Ride Two to Ride Three so that we could sign contracts prior to collecting some of the revenues. That will be returned back to Ride Two. I don't recall, I think it was 36 or 42 months.
You mentioned Ride Three, but that's Ride Four.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understand.
Forty-five million, that's Ride Four, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You use Ride Two as seed capital for Ride Four?
That's correct. And then that money will be returned back as the collections come through in Ride Four.
But every Ride, every Ride Two project is complete at this point, correct?
Yes. Yeah, there's one, I think there's two right away items that have not been closed out due to heirs' property issues. So it technically may never be. I mean, until they probate their, those issues, we don't know when that will actually...
What do we do with that surplus cash?
That is a great question. But it's a question you'll get the answer at some point in the campaign.
Well, next we will transition into our presentation to you on the strategic plan. And you may recognize at each of your desk is this little pamphlet. And that kind of gives you a brief summary of the mission, vision, and core values as well as the focus areas that we will be presenting to you in just a moment. I will share with you one quote before we start. It's one I just happened to read last week and I thought it resonated with me and it made with you as well. But if you remember, a name called Helen Keller. You may remember that she, at a very young age, was stricken and blind as well as lost the ability to speak. But she became a very renowned author, speaker, and activist for a number of causes, even with those conditions. And she said this, "It's a terrible thing to see and have no vision." It's a terrible thing to see and have no vision. And what we want to share with you is how we are working towards setting the vision within our organization. And this morning or this afternoon, we have Mr. Bill Tomes here with us. And you may remember, if you've been involved in any of the South Line Association of Counties or local government leadership institute, Bill has been a mainstay. And both of those organizations and presenting to a number of different council members at the conferences and different conventions that we have on an annual basis. And Bill was with the College of Charleston Joseph P. Riley Center for Livable Communities. And I guess we've been working with Bill for 10-plus years in different roles, but primarily related to our strategic planning. And Bill was actually a member of local government with the city of Lyfwood. So he knows exactly what we are dealing with in terms of local government and those complexities as well as challenges. So we'll turn it over to Bill.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go over briefly the methodology we use to get to the strategic plan that the staff will be presenting in a few minutes. And then just summarizing some of the work we did to get to the point where we could develop that strategic plan. We started working on this back in February. And through a series of facilitated meetings with staff, interviews with council members, and then surveys of department heads and employees, we really focused on examining the current state of the organization. Because strategic planning in its simplest terms is identifying where you're at, identifying where you want to go, and figuring out how you're going to get from here to there. All right? And that's the strategic plan. And so, like I said, we did, employees had a chance to fill out a survey. Department heads had a chance to fill out a survey. I did interview each of the council members, I believe, back in March, I think. And then we had six facilitated sessions between February and, I believe, August or September. And then, once we did that, the staff worked real hard on looking at the mission, vision, and values and doing some revisions to that. And finally, identifying the strategic focus areas, goals, strategies, and desired results as part of the strategic plan. And again, they're going to review that. But I did want to take a couple of minutes to talk about some of the survey results and interview results we found in our early work on the project. So the department head survey was really to look at the strengths and weaknesses in their departments of the organization. And three key themes emerged from those summaries. I believe, you know, the main strengths was the staff, the hardworking employees of the county. And then we looked at weaknesses or areas of concern. First one was enhancing recruitment and retention efforts. You know, turnover is an issue in some departments and some departments are working short-staff and that's a challenge. Second was to improve interdepartmental communication. I would have been shocked if that was not one of the issues. Every one of these I do, it's an issue. And it's not just the larger counties like you. I spoke to a county council last week that has 200 employees and one of the main issues is communication. So not surprising. And then the third was upgrading the county's technology infrastructure. You know, that's, things are changing so fast and it's difficult to keep up with that. And that's going to be a challenge to modernize systems that will support departments and overall productivity. Employee survey, it was fairly typical of other employee surveys we do in local governments. Some areas that were more positive than we see were the employees felt good about the training they've received, career advancement, and the good relationships with supervisors and coworkers. Some of the areas that were a little bit lower than what we usually see was about their compensation, communication, and recognition of their work. In some facilitated sessions with the staff, we looked at areas outside the county government that are going to impact county government. And there's five of these. One is demographic, what's happening to your population? So we heard it's growing. The senior population is increasing and there's increasing demands for services and increased traffic. From a political, legal perspective, there was concerns about what immigration enforcement activities might have on Ori County, particularly in the construction and hospitality industries. From the economic perspective, Ori County has a strong economy, a low unemployment rate, and expanding healthcare industry. From technology, we talked about county, the county has invested in cybersecurity systems, but those threats are always out there and the unknown impact of artificial intelligence. And then finally, from the environmental perspective, there's always going to be threats from hurricanes, floods, and fires. Developmental impacts have, in some ways, hurt the environment, but your efforts such as mitigation banks, green space, and wastewater connectivity have helped. Then finally, I did speak with all 12 council members and asked them about strengths and weaknesses. And the consensus on the strengths was that the staff, again, is a strength. Hardworking Ori County employees, the senior leadership, and your budgeting practices. And weaknesses were managing growth and employee pay. When I asked about top priorities, again, I had a lot of different responses, but the, I think, three top responses I got were public safety, personnel pay, managing growth, and Ride Four and better road connectivity. All this led up to identifying the strategic focus areas and strategies that the staff is going to talk about now.
So Bill explained how we got here. So we all just want to touch base a little bit on why we're here. So Ori County is growing, evolving, and facing new challenges. Employees want clarity, connection, and opportunities. Our residents expect transparency, quality, and care. And this plan is not just a document, it's a commitment, a roadmap to how we serve, how we grow, and how we lead the Ori Way. And at the heart of everything we do is our employees and they can show you better than I can tell you.
Every day, hundreds of thousands of people in Ori County rely on us.
We're more than departments and job titles. Together, we are here for one reason, to serve. Ori County planning and zoning.
On your tummy.
Every day, we work to serve the people of Ori County.
Our purpose is to improve the quality of life today for our future.
This colony is bigger than any one-person job. It is about the community we build together.
I keep our roads safe so our families can get home every day.
I create spaces where neighbors can connect and kids can play.
I use financial data to help with decisions that keep our county moving forward.
I put out information to empower people to make informed decisions.
I help residents navigate the justice system with respect and care.
I help maintain Ori County's fleet so our vehicles stay reliable and ready to serve the community.
It's our honor to keep Ori County community safe.
Every role connects back to our shared purpose.
How about a nice taste?
This is what we do. From roads to records, from safety and financial stewardship, these are the services that make Ori County thrive and put our future in focus.
Every job matters.
Every person counts.
Together, we make the plan real.
Our Y, serving the people of Ori County together.
Apple cake.
We are excellence in action.
That gives you an idea of what our team members feel about what we're doing. And it tells a story much better than we can.
Mr. Chairman, one quick... I thought last year they did a great job with their brochures and their presentation. But I can see this year, they're already blowing it out of water. Great job because it makes you think, all of us watching that. Thank you.
Indeed. One of the things that we wanted to do is to look at the entire plan. And in the past, we've had a mission, vision, and core values. And those have taken us very far. Now, we are where we are today because of the work that was done in years past with council, with leadership, with our staff in that regard. Our mission in the past, I think it's currently today, prior to this change, that we have as Ori County government's mission is to provide a community environment in which the citizens and visitors of Ori County can enjoy the highest quality of life. And that drove a lot of the plans and strategies that we had in place. Our vision was to sustain and enhance the quality of life. And you see a theme there in that regard. We're not losing that. Hopefully, we're enhancing that as we move forward. Our core values were a number of things that describe how we wanted to act and serve in that regard. But quite honestly, if I went to any of our employees, I don't believe they could recite that list to me because it was so large in that regard. So we worked to make a modification and an update to that, which would now have as our mission, we are committed to building a bright future for Ori County by delivering public services with excellence, protecting what makes our community special, and creating opportunities to progress and partnerships. And you will see that theme of partnerships throughout the presentation today. The vision would expand a little bit, but be very similar. Our vision is to, is a safe and healthy community that recognizes and respects our rural heritage, maintains a focus on future growth and economic diversification, and partners to provide the infrastructure necessary to drive long-term sustainability. Now, it's reaching those words that I think, if you shared with us what the priorities are to make sure that we are fiscally stable in that regard and we have the ability to deliver what our community needs in that respect. On the core values itself, we decided to, or are proposing that we reduce the number of those really to only five. And we create a way for us... And we create a way for us to remember those and use those much more readily in our daily work by creating the Ory Way. So each letter has a meaning in that regard. It reflects who we are, what we stand for, and the values we uphold in every department, every interaction, every day. So the H, we chose character in that regard, and that is to do what's right. It encompasses integrity, fairness, ethics, the trustworthiness of each and every one of our employees in those daily interactions with our community. And we debated this quite heavily as a team in that regard, because, you know, we typically look at our ethics standards as one of the highest standards that we have within the state, and that's subject to all of our elected officials and, and every one of our team members in that regard. But to be ethical means that I'm not going to do what's wrong. But that doesn't mean I always do what's right in that regard. As long as I don't mess up, I'm still ethical. But if I see something that needs to happen, I cannot do it and still be ethical. But if I have good character, I can't sit on the sidelines. I must act in that regard. And that's what we're attempting to capture here in that regard. Collaboration would be the O. And we recognize the partnerships we have within the community with our municipalities, with our utilities, other governmental agencies are critical for us to deliver the service in the correct way here in Ory County. So collaboration is working together, internal and external, teamwork, communications, and being proactive, not reactionary in that regard. R would be the service. Give your best. Customer first, solution focused in that regard. The second R would be caring, to lead with heart, empathy, safety, valuing others. And the Y in Ory would be quality. Raise the bar, innovation, professionalism, reliability. We're in an ever-changing technology scenario, and we want to use technology and innovation in all that we do. And in fact, I don't know if you've seen this yet, but we have a program in place that's being led by Ms. Shannon Todd, Assistant County Administrator, titled Elevate Ory, where they will specifically bring our team together to work on direct issues that improve our level of service and abilities to our consumer, to our customers in that regard. And as an example, we've just implemented a process with our treasurer's department that interacts with planning and zoning as well as the police. So now, you can now go online and do an online business application and routes those things automatically, those departments, so you physically don't have to walk from office to office to office to try to get this done. It's in place and it's working. And they have goals to look at a number of things, probate, clerk of court, number of processes that we have internally that can be much more efficient and effective in that regard. So that's an always-evolving process that we will look to in that regard, and just an example of the quality that I think our team brings to the plate each and every day. For our strategies, we looked at four focus areas. And you will see some consistency with the previous program, the previous strategic plan we have in place. But number one would be community relations. And I've made this statement before, and I still think it's true, we have a gap in terms of our relations with the community. And there's several reasons for that. One, I think there has been an unrealistic expectation of what government is really meant to do. And in that regard, I think government has... Excuse me. Excuse me. A government in its purest sense was designed to do those things that citizens can't do themselves, or that we collectively can do more efficient together in that regard. It was hard to fix your road in front of you, but we together can fix that in an acceptable manner. That's just one example in that regard. But I also think we don't have the small number of communication channels that we had in the past. When I was growing up, basically, you had three channels. And everything you got was on those three channels. See, it was easy to communicate. Now, Makayla, I don't know how many different channels we would even say that we have, and there's many people that don't even watch TV anymore. It's all streaming. It comes from different places, and they don't even see the local news in that regard. So it's much, much more difficult to get that critical message out about what's happening, what's needing to happen in that regard, what's coming up. That challenge is going to be one of our larger challenges in that regard. Number two is employee relations and internal trust. And we will go through each of these areas in more detail in just a moment, but this was not in our previous plan. But to me, the only way we can accomplish that is through the employees, our relationship with them and the service they provide. So we're adding that as one of our components. Growth and quality of life still encompass those things we included in the previous plan in that regard. And we're emphasizing more this fiscal responsibility. And our team will now present, I think, something on each one of these elements to give you an idea of where we will go.
So we will start at the foundation of why we are in this room and the foundation of what we set out, we set out to do every day: to serve our community. We want to ensure that moving forward with our strategic plan, as we update it, we are keeping community relations in mind. And for us, what that meant as we went through these discussions was strengthening public trust by getting verifiable trusted information out there, showcasing county processes and successes, and meeting residents where they are, physically and socio-economically. As we go through each of these focus areas, we have our desired results, and to some extent, that is how we will measure success in those areas. So for community relations, that's positive community survey results. People having positive experiences when they engage with county government. That's folks having better understanding of county processes, services, and accomplishments. We want to hear the information we put out coming back at us accurately. In the same way, we want to see less negative media coverage or commentary and less misinformation out there. Again, accurate information being repeated back to us or mirrored back to us. And then we want to see increased community participation. Folks showing up to events, folks being there when we extend the hand to shake hands with us and partner. We laid out a few different strategies to go through and make this possible. We'll go through each of those now. The first is relationship building. For that, we're thinking of collaborative partnerships, working with those external businesses and organizations, and launching initiatives together. Some of those are government agencies, our municipal partners, our state partners. Others are different entities, our, our folks who work in different industries, who can partner with us in individual initiatives like donation drives, or meetings, or events, whatever may come up along the way. Just work together, because we are a community and we have a lot of different skillsets in our community. Proactive narrative management. We're going to select the most applicable external communication device to get the information to the right people at the right time. That will help us get that positive media coverage that we need to ensure that people have the information they need to make the decisions that come up day to day. That also ensures that we get fewer people coming to us with a problem, because we've already proactively addressed that problem before it could develop. You can't have community relations without having community engagement. We need people to show up. We need people to work with us. We need people to want to work with us. So we're going to conduct annual community surveys to see what people want, what do they need, where do we have gaps that we could potentially fill? And then we're going to host some quarterly town halls and attend local events. Some of these already go on at the individual department level, but now we want to see it county-wide. We want to see it crossing the departments, crossing those different entities and partnerships. And as our Public Information Office always says, we're going to tell the Ory County story. That's not just our county employees, that's the people that we interact with in our community. We are all Ory County. We are all one team. So we want to go out there and we want to highlight what our employees are doing, what our citizens are doing, and how those two groups cross paths. That's visual storytelling, like the video that my team was able to put together. That's also news articles, posts to the county website, all of those different communication mechanisms, because like our administrator said, folks are looking different directions for information these days. There is no one specific spot that folks are going, so we have to make sure we're hitting all of them. We're also going to engage in some educational partnerships. The most recent example of this was our CCU Day, Ory County Government CCU Day. We went out, we talked to students, we showed them how they could potentially become involved in Ory County Government as an employee one day, but also just as a community member right now, whether they leave after they graduate or they stick around a while. We want to do that not just at the college level, university level, but also at the secondary education level. Let's work with Ory County schools, because we're all in the same community. We all have the same goal: to serve everybody who lives here, everyone who visits here. And finally, to that point about innovation, we're going to do Gov. on the Go. We want to meet people where they are, whether that is physical, having an office in their area that they can go to to get help, or providing them internet resources or virtual resources to meet whatever their needs may be. So we're going to deploy things like a mobile bus service that is basically Ory County on wheels, to go to them and give them the services that they need. But we're also going to be looking at those technology solutions that will meet us along the way. And I will hand this off to Focus Area Two.
So for our second focus area is about employee relations and internal trust. And as Barry mentioned, this was not in our previous plan, so we'll warn you, this section is very dense, but very much needed. We know that how we serve externally starts with how we operate internally. And this focus area is about building a strong foundation within our organization. The goal here is going to be to attract, develop, and retain talented employees who feel engaged, valued, and empowered to serve the public, while also building a culture of transparency, communication, and accountability. For our desired results in this area, we would look for lower turnover and vacancy rates, more advancement opportunities, higher employee satisfaction, faster, clearer information sharing across departments and the organization as a whole, and improved communication scores on our internal employee surveys. First strategy here would be our leadership pipeline. We're going to be looking to develop a middle manager leadership development program. So our middle managers are truly those boots on the ground. They're the ones translating our council's vision and executive direction into day-to-day action. And they supervise the majority of our workforce and handle the public's most direct interactions and are often the first to feel the pressures of operational changes. So success here would look like increased internal promotions and strengthened succession planning. We'd also look to create opportunities for horizontal growth through training and certificates, and would hope to see higher participation in voluntary training and more multi-skilled We'd look to create purposeful career paths. So several action items here, including designing and implementing internal progression maps, so there's clear promotional pathways understood by all employees. Look to establish a mentorship program for our high-performing individuals. This would look to retain our top performers and higher employee engagement. We would like to offer job swap shadowing opportunities where it can improve cross-functional knowledge and employee satisfaction. And also look to create standardized departmental onboarding, which would include external contact listing and frontline training. This would be when you bring them on board and we can help them with the connections with HTC, Coastal Tech, Grand Strand, so they have those partnerships built in from day one. And we'd also look to offer guided tours to county departments and facilities. Currently, this is only offered to our leadership development program, but by doing this, we could increase employee awareness of all county operations and additional career opportunities. We've looked to create a culture of engagement, service, recognition, and well-being. We'd like to start a recognition program for our safety, no incidents over time. This could increase our safety compliance and route. We'd like to offer peer-to-peer awards programs. So currently, we offer the Employee of the Quarter Awards, which our department head nominated. This would allow anyone to nominate anyone across departments as they see fit. We'd like to launch bi-annual employee poll surveys and hope to get higher response rates over time with actionable feedback. We'd like to implement customer service training inspired by hospitality standards, so thank Disney, thank Chick-fil-A, we want to be in that list as Ory County Government. We'd like to encourage civic engagement and optional service days and recognize employees for community involvement. So we'd like to see positive community visibility and employee pride. And we'd like to expand our in-house training offerings and provide training to all staff levels, not just those department heads and up. Next, action item would be competitive total compensation package. So we'd like to continue our annual market analysis so our pay remains aligned with market trends, explore unique benefits such as flex scheduling and off-site training at all staffing levels to improve recruitment and retention, and create an Ory County Emerging Leaders Group to increase engagement and networking among staff. This is all about making Ory County not just a place to work, but a place to build a career. And lastly, we look to focus on internal communications and trust. So one of those items would be redesigning our internal landing page to highlight timely news, and to create internal communication guidelines, strategies, and trainings of supervisors and managers on communication best practices, so we're more consistent and effective across departments.
Next up is growth and quality of life, which is Focus Area Three. Thankfully, we are a growing community. If you're not growing, you're dying. But with that growth, comes with new pressures on quality of life, and that growth allows us to improve quality of life, not just maintain what we have today. So our goal is to manage rapid growth to preserve Ory County's unique character, ensure equitable access to services, and enhance residents' well-being. Which leads to desired results, which is increased access to behavioral health and support services, greater understanding of land use and growth planning, improved public engagement and quality of life planning, stronger partnerships supporting community well-being, and a stronger sense of community. So first on that list is behavioral services offerings. Under y'all's, council's guidance, we have created the new Department of Behavioral Services, which will help expand mental health internally and externally, programs homelessness, autism, and opioid outreach programs. Success would look like increased referrals, partnerships formed, and service coverage across the area, and that would be with private, public, nonprofits. Think school districts, HGTC, Coastal, the hospital systems, United Way, Echo, New Directions, and all our private employers as well. Which would allow the joint funding, shared services, reductions in behavioral health crisis as well. So we're getting that off the ground as we speak.
How?
How?
So with behavioral services, they are going through trying to partner everybody up right now. We're going through the needs analysis for the homeless shelter, so we can put that out for RFP or RFQ to see where that needs to be. Right now, those needs aren't being met.
How are you getting, how are you getting the people to the services?
How are we getting, internal people or external?
External people. People that we identify as having needs to the services that they need.
By going out into the community, into partnering with the school district, because before, we weren't doing that. So they know what we provide. The school district also provides more services than we realized as well. We didn't, it's getting everybody to talk. I mean, I hate to say meeting for the sake of meeting, but really, we needed that. Like environmental services, they know where the homeless camps are. That's something they deal with on a regular basis. They do pair up with emergency management, so if something's coming, a storm, or we're getting an arctic chill, they can go communicate. But for the mental health, like, they weren't getting service- But for the mental health, they weren't getting services from anybody, or from government. They were getting it from the nonprofit area. So it's still evolving. I've been meeting with behavioral services regularly now. It's exciting what they're doing and the direction they're heading into. And I think you'll see real results in the next few months. Anything else on behavioral? We're going to have the growth guy come now. I'm not the growth guy anymore.
You want to be?
Got time for it?
So I get the easy stuff. How do we grow in a smart way? That's going to take your wisdom and guidance. It's not coming from me. We'll propose things over time. So one of the, one part of that is to preserve our rural character. As you know, well know, you know, closer to the coast, we're more cemented in what we're generally going to look like over the next few years, but that in itself has its challenges. But one of the opportunities that you have in front of you right now is to preserve the rural character of the more inland areas right now. That is going to be a challenge over the next thing. And we've done some things like the MRDP, I'm sure y'all are aware of. We're looking at more cement enhanced buffer requirements and things like that. That will be county-wide, that will actually help preserve a lot of, a lot more open space in some of the areas where we need it. We're also looking to proactively communicate zoning approvals and land use plans. And if you look around you, you're surrounded by the fruit of that effort. I was sitting over here, or one way or the other, over here, I think, planning commission had a meeting and I got a text from one of our councilmen, and said, "I can't see it," or "I can't hear it." And we were recognizing some of the same things, that it wasn't showing up well for the folks that were at home and engaged over the television. So we, under, with much more diligence and hard work than we anticipated, we got this done. Actually, last week was actually finished with these microphones that you see hanging from the ceiling in here. Technology is not always easy and it's not always available, but you know, with patience and perseverance, you can get a hold of those things. And if you look, I'm sitting over here, and generally, I'm looking at the screen, but when someone like the administrator is speaking, I can look at the administrator and see the screen above him. It's kind of that Chick-fil-A thing. Chick-fil-A anticipates what you need before you need it, and the provisions are there. And that's, this is kind of a microcosm of what we're shooting for. So we're going to do some, we're going to be doing some things over time. You know, the default is always websites, but we've got to find some other ways, because not everybody goes to the website. We, we're going to try to communicate, we get, you know, we put out signs, and that worked great back in the 1900s, right? We put out signs when there's a rezoning, but sometimes those things go missing. I think we've seen that recently. We go back out and we put them back up. So we're going to try to find ways that we can communicate with the public, and that is going to be, that is an ongoing and will be continued to be an ongoing effort. One of the other things that we have done in the past, to some, to some degrees of success, is to communicate with our comprehensive plan. You set the vision for what our county is going to look like over the next, not only 20 years, you're setting what our county is going to look like, you know, almost in perpetuity. You need, we have a 20-year planning window, but your vision needs to be longer than 20 years. We need to think diligently what our county needs to look like, not just in 2045, but in 2085, when we're really cemented in what we're going to do. So... I guess also the other easy thing, realistic expectations, not just expectations, but realistic. I think we, we met last week and discussed this with some of you, and some folks have the understanding that we should be able to stop the neighbor's dog from barking. That's not realistic. There's no substitute for a good neighbor. There's no substitute for being a good neighbor. So part of the realistic expectations is to provide regular updates on county council decisions to the employees. And that's probably been a shortcoming of ours. I think we've identified that, so we're working on some ways, not just through the website, not just through the cafe that you see when you log into the county system, that's an internal site, but other ways. Because a lot of our employees don't see that on a regular basis. And the employees that do see it kind of get numb to it. So you have to do some, do some things, you know, the human animal is a challenge to keep engaged in what they should be doing, right? So we're going to partner with Realtor Associations and others, HOAs, to distribute a relocation guide. You've seen our Map Your Move website. That is a great resource for those that are thinking about moving locally or moving into Ori County. And it helps set some of those realistic expectations, but it's hard to get them to understand that that website exists. It gets traffic, but it probably would be appreciated by a lot more if we can get the word out. So that's what we are going to work on. And enroll all of the employees, including new hires, in Ori County Government Weekly Updates. That again, is just another opportunity to further communicate and regularly communicate. You know, everybody, communication is the key to every good relationship, whether it's at your workplace, if it's at your home, communication is really the key. We get bent out of shape a lot of times, you know, when our spouse doesn't do something we thought they should have done, but it turns out they've already done it. Or, you know, this employee misunderstands that employee. So communication is key. So smart growth and realistic expectations.
David, is part of what Shannon was talking about earlier in training our middle management staff going to be inclusive of being our frontline communication for our consumers with this information?
For sure.
Yes, sir.
So our final focus area is fiscal responsibility. The goal here is to sustain essential services and strategic investments through prudent budget, budgeting, the first divided revenues, and transparent stewardship of taxpayer dollars. So with this, we are looking to the future. We want to make sure that we maintain adequate funding to meet our service requirements, that we are prioritizing capital and operational investments, that the public has an understanding of how our funds are allocated, and that our department leaders are taking ownership and maintaining their budgets effectively. What are the strategies that we have for achieving these outcomes? The first is revenue diversification. We want to reduce our dependency on property taxes by diversifying our revenue portfolio. This means exploring options like the local option sales tax, additional grants, and other funding channels to give us a greater mixture of revenue sources. Next is prioritizing efficiency. We want to evaluate needs versus wants during our budgeting process, and expand budget literacy training, as well as make a continuous effort to streamline our processes. This means aligning our budgeting with our strategic priorities, and giving the staff the confidence they need to maintain their budgets effectively. And we also want to bring back our budget trainings to help departments do this. We want to look at ways to streamline our processes, whether it's looking for simplifying workflows or seeking out new technology, adopting a work smarter, not harder mindset. And finally, fiscal education. We want to increase departmental ownership of budgets by decreasing budget overages and holding departments accountable for their, their spending. We plan to establish an internal scorecard and annual budget reviews. So this is like a report card to see how accurately a department is planning their budget, how many budget transfers they have, that sort of thing. And lastly, we want to create tools to educate our citizens on where their money goes, creating higher awareness to budget use. And this is one of those tools. So this is a page out of our Popular Annual Financial Report, which is a document that the Finance Department produces. It's on our website. I think all of you got a copy. If you didn't and want one, let me know. So this, this example takes a tax payment and shows where each of those dollars is allocated throughout the county. So if you look at this one, an $894 tax payment, $249 goes to fire, 301 is to public safety, 19 to recreation. So we want to get these out and make the public aware that these exist. So with these strategies, our intent is to increase our fiscal responsibilities and strengthen how we manage taxpayer dollars.
What you've seen gives you a very good picture of where we desire to go. And this is a living, breathing document. It's not finalized today. It will be ever-evolving in that respect. And we may be modifying that as we move forward. I would share just a few things with you, because I do look at things a little untraditional in that regard. I would say that every year, our residents, visitors, and business owners make an investment in the form of property taxes, fees, and charges that they pay to purchase the services of Ori County Government. What our employees provide, they purchase every year with the monies that they invest in Ori County. They don't understand it that way. Sometimes, we don't understand it that way. That's an opportunity in that respect. I would also say that if we do not use those resources efficiently and effectively, in other words, they get a return on their investment in that regard, our residents, visitors, and business owners will either discontinue or redirect their investment through their elected representatives, county council. That's another way to look at it that I don't think we do today. And that's the message I want our employees to know, and what I want our citizens to know, and what they can expect from us. Now, as an employee of Ori County Government, there's five things that I try to remind myself of. First is who pays my salary. Now Benjamin Franklin said at the Constitutional Convention years ago, "In free government, the rulers are the servants. And the people, their superiors and sovereigns." I need to always remember who pays my paycheck. Number two, my position exists to serve our community and our team. My position is as much service as anyone here in that respect. So in essence, everybody's my boss. I have to answer to everybody. Number three, our citizens must be informed and participate in the process. It was Thomas Jefferson that says, "Whenever the people are well-informed, they can be trusted with their own government." We have a gap in an opportunity in that regard, in terms of communication. Number four is we can do more together than alone. That applies to local government, citizens, businesses, and institutions. It works so much better when parents participate with their children, when the community becomes behind those efforts and participates in it, when we work together to solve a problem, public and private interest altogether in that respect. The outcomes are usually way better and more impactful when we work together in that regard. And number five is everybody is accountable to someone. That includes me and every member of our team. That's the five things I try to remind myself of. And I think that exhibits to you what we're trying to communicate in that respect concerning this strategic plan. So we open it up for any questions or any comments? Very inspirational and great job. Well, today, we will ask you if you support that later in the meeting with resolution in that regard. It lets us know we're moving in the right direction. And again, this is a living, breathing document, and we'll be working on this and implementing certain elements as we get into the 2027 budget process. So you'll hear a lot more about it as we move forward, and updates on it as well when we meet also. Okay? Back to work? Yes, sir? So we want to get these out and make the public aware that these exist. So with these strategies, our intent is to increase our fiscal responsibilities and strengthen how we manage taxpayer dollars. Jordan, what's that? Come here. Jordan, put over here. Let's come to order. We'll turn this back over to the administrator. All right, we're back on the record. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
All right, thank you, sir. One of the things that we did not mention earlier, the video that you saw at the beginning of the meeting, will be one of those things that we will share with all of our employees because I think it really stands out as to what they do each and every day. And I actually learned some things. You saw that SWAT team or the team going through the water. I didn't know they trained that way, to be quite honest. But we've also used that as some of our outreach, but also with our orientations for our new employees. I think that kind of sets the stage for what our expectations are very, very quickly. So we will use that and really thank staff. I think they did an excellent job putting that together.
They did.
The next area we wanted to share with you is that traditional component that we look at this time of the year and try to look at the growth and the economic situation that we find ourselves in because it does lead us to some of the decisions and elements that we'll be considering in the 2027 budget process. The first thing we want to highlight is just some economic type elements in that regard. Currently, we're looking at an inflation rate that is 2.9% and that actually is above the target rate for the Federal Reserve. What we have seen and we'll make a few comments about is the tariffs that we are looking at has had the impact of making that a larger number because that drives some of the costs that consumers are having to pay in that regard. So it does impact the inflation measure. We do expect that to somewhat continue at about the same levels that's slightly higher than what we were anticipating in that regard. It will impact us as we're looking for our normal cost increases in the budget process. For a interest rate environment, the Federal Reserve rate stands, when I looked at this, at roughly 4.22% in September. I think on this one, it was 4.25%. There is a forecast for there to be four 25 basis points drop. So a whole percentage drop is forecasted to get us somewhere in that 2027, 2028 timeframe. So not sure when it will occur. I will say, if you look at that years from 2023 to 2025, you see that we were in a much higher environment than we had been in the last several years. That really has impacted our financial results. We will talk a little bit in the coming slides about our excess revenues and that's one of the drivers in that excess revenues. Now, we can't count on that revenue being a recurring revenue in that respect because interest rates are not something we can control. It's a market-driven issue and a policy-driven issue as much as anything. But our treasurer and her staff have really benefited the county in regards to trying to take advantage of the rates that we have had with the deposits we have on hand. So that's one of the elements that we will be considering as well. Unemployment, traditionally, we are slightly above the state and federal averages. And if you look back at 2023, that was kind of an unusual scenario because we were advancing and filling jobs quicker than the other areas coming out of COVID in that respect. But we've kind of returned at this point to our traditional type expectation with the 2024 and the 2025 where we're slightly above those other factors in that regard. Even with the employment rate rising in that respect, we still find ourselves in a employee-driven market, meaning for every job opening that there is, there's less than one person looking. So we don't have the staff for all employers in that regard to fill the positions that are being sought in that respect. And unusually, unexpectedly, local government is one of those areas that the gap is widening and is predicted to widen over a period of time. And that's what that bottom graph does demonstrate that through roughly 2040, we see the growth in that job gap being as many as 10,000 positions within the state of South Carolina. So we have a challenge that we must meet in that regard to fill those critical positions to provide the services that are needed from our taxpayers.
Is that pay-driven?
Yeah, I would say traditionally, government would lag the private sector in that regard. So there's an element of that, no doubt. But traditionally, we have a little bit better benefits that somewhat offset that. Sometimes, that's an education issue for those seekers in that regard that we can perhaps do a better job with. We've included this slide just to remind, I think, all of us in that regard that we have a lot of different funding types and we sometimes don't focus on who is paying those types of taxes or fees or revenue. And I just use this as a way for us to kind of orient ourselves in that regard. It has a column for our existing residents, a new resident, what our businesses pay and what our tourists pay in that regard. So if you look at our existing residents, for property taxes, traditionally, as a primary resident, they pay a 4% assessment ratio, which is our lowest assessment ratio. But they also get the benefit of that school credit and based on their age, it could be home set exemption as well. But they also pay taxes on their automobiles, campers, and boats, and airplanes, and any other assets they may have in that regard that are taxed. I will say, Ori County traditionally has been a taxpayer-friendly government. And I'll give you a couple examples of that. Now, the state has allowed local governments to make decisions about assessment ratios for boats. Currently, right now, the assessment ratio for a boat is 10 and 1/2% in the state. However, the legislature allowed governments, if they chose, to select a 6% assessment ratio for boats. Ori County government enacted that in the past when that first became available. If you look at airplanes, the state normal assessment ratio is 10 and 1/2% of the value of that to be taxed. But they also allowed, in that case, that you, as a local government, could elect to tax that at a 4% assessment ratio. Ori County selected that and implemented that when it became available at the state. So we've done things to try to be as taxpayer-friendly as the legislature has allowed us to do. Now, our local residents pay taxes on their automobiles. But I would say, in a similar manner, because our tax rates are so low in terms of millage, because we have a high commercial base that fits into our tax structure, that our millage rates are actually lower than what you would pay on the same vehicle. Now, right now, if you wanted to buy a pickup truck, you can buy an F-150, a Chevrolet, or a Dodge, or any number of things of that nature. And probably the best price you can get on that is around $40,000 for a brand-new truck. That's the lowest price I've seen advertised for those things. Our tax rates here in Ori County is 201 mils times that assessed ratio of that value. If you go to Beaufort County, that's 259 mils. If you go to Berkeley County, that's 246 mils. Charleston is 256. Greenville is 339. Richland County is 448. Same vehicle, if you own it in Ori County, it's going to cost you less because of the tax base that we do have in that regard. So I mean, we have one of the most tax-friendly elements for our residents in that respect. You know, from a fee standpoint, our existing residents will pay code enforcement if they're making an addition to their home. If they're not making an addition, that's a fee they'll never pay or won't have to pay in that regard. If they go out to eat, they will pay the hospitality fee. They're billed the stormwater fee that everyone on their real estate receives each year in the unincorporated areas. Municipalities charge their own fee and collect that traditionally through their water bills and so forth. If they go to one of our recreation programs, a local resident may pay a recreation fee. They certainly will pay the road fee on their automobile. And if they record an instrument, refinance their home, then they may pay a ROD cost. But typically, that's not the bulk of what revenue the fees actually bring in. Our existing residents are subject to impact fees if they...
Let's come to order, we'll turn this back over to the administrator. All right, we're back on the record. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
All right, thank you, sir. One of the things that we did not mention earlier, the video that you saw at the beginning of the meeting, will be one of those things that we will share with all of our employees, because I think it really stands out as to what they do each and every day. And I actually learned some things. You saw that SWAT team or the team going through the water, I didn't know they trained that way, to be quite honest. But we've also used that as some of our outreach, but also with our orientations for our new employees. I think that kind of sets the stage for what our expectations are very, very quickly. So we will use that and really thank staff. I think they did an excellent job putting that together. The next area we wanted to share with you is that traditional component that we look at this time of the year and try to look at the growth and the economic situation that we find ourselves in. Because it does lead us to some of the decisions and elements that we'll be considering in the 2027 budget process. The first thing we want to highlight is just some economic type elements in that regard. Currently, we're looking at an inflation rate that is 2.9%, and that actually is above the target rate for the Federal Reserve. What we have seen and will make a few comments about is the tariffs that we are looking at has had the impact of making that a larger number. Because that drives some of the costs that consumers are having to pay in that regard. So it does impact the inflation measure. We do expect that to somewhat continue at about the same levels, slightly higher than what we were anticipating in that regard. It will impact us as we're looking for our normal cost increases in the budget process. For a interest rate environment, the Federal Reserve rate stands, when I looked at this, at roughly 4.22%. In September, I think on this one was 4.25. There is a forecast for there to be four 25 basis points drop. So a whole percentage drop is forecasted to get us somewhere in that 2027, 2028 timeframe. So not sure when it will occur. I will say if you look at that years from 2023 to 2025, you see that we were in a much higher environment than we had been in the last several years. That really has impacted our financial results. We will talk a little bit in the coming slides about our excess revenues, and that's one of the drivers in that excess revenues. Now, we can't count on that revenue being a recurring revenue in that respect, because interest rates are not something we can control. It's a market-driven issue and a policy-driven issue as much as anything. But our treasurer and her staff have really benefited the county in regards to trying to take advantage of the rates that we have had with the deposits we have on hand. So that's one of the elements that we will be considering as well. Unemployment, traditionally, we are slightly above the state and federal averages. And if you look back at 2023, that was kind of an unusual scenario, because we were advancing and filling jobs quicker than the other areas coming out of COVID in that respect. But we've kind of returned at this point to our traditional type expectation. With the 2024 and the 2025, we're slightly above those other factors in that regard. Even with the employment rate rising in that respect, we still find ourselves in a employee-driven market. Meaning for every job opening that there is, there's less than one person looking. So we don't have the staff for all employers in that regard to fill the positions that are being sought in that respect. And unusually, unexpectedly, local government is one of those areas that the gap is widening. And is predicted to widen over a period of time. And that's what that bottom graph does demonstrate. That through roughly 2040, we see the growth in that job gap being as many as 10,000 positions within the state of South Carolina. So we have a challenge that we must meet in that regard to fill those critical positions to provide the services that are needed from our taxpayers. Yeah, I would say traditionally, government would lag the private sector in that regard. So there's an element of that, no doubt. But traditionally, we have a little bit better benefits that somewhat offset that. Sometimes that's an education issue for those seekers in that regard that we can perhaps do a better job with. We've included this slide just to remind, I think, all of us in that regard, that we have a lot of different funding types. And we sometimes don't focus on who is paying those types of taxes or fees or revenue. And I just use this as a way for us to kind of orient ourselves in that regard. It has a column for our existing residents, a new resident, what our businesses pay and what our tourists pay in that regard. So if you look at our existing residents, for property taxes, traditionally, as a primary resident, they pay a 4% assessment ratio, which is our lowest assessment ratio. But they also get the benefit of that school credit, and based on their age, it could be home set exemption as well. But they also pay taxes on their automobiles, campers and boats and airplanes and any other assets they may have in that regard that are taxed. I will say, Ori County traditionally has been a taxpayer-friendly government. And I'll give you a couple of examples of that. Now, the state has allowed local governments to make decisions about assessment ratios for boats. Currently, right now, the assessment ratio for a boat is 10 and 1/2% in the state. However, the legislature allowed governments, if they chose, to select a 6% assessment ratio for boats. Ori County government enacted that in the past when that first became available. If you look at airplanes, the state normal assessment ratio is 10 and 1/2% of the value of that to be taxed. But they also allowed, in that case, that you, as a local government, could elect to tax that at a 4% assessment ratio. Ori County selected that and implemented that when it became available at the state. So we've done things to try to be as taxpayer-friendly as the legislature has allowed us to do. Now, our local residents pay taxes on their automobiles. But I would say, in a similar manner, because our tax rates are so low in terms of millage, because we have a high commercial base that fits into our tax structure, that our millage rates are actually lower than what you would pay on the same vehicle. Now, right now, if you wanted to buy a pickup truck, you can buy an F-150, a Chevrolet, or a Dodge, or any number of things of that nature. And probably the best price you can get on that is around $40,000 for a brand-new truck. That's the lowest price I've seen advertised for those things. Our tax rates here in Ori County is 201 mils times that assessed ratio of that value. If you go to Beaufort County, that's 259 mils. If you go to Berkeley County, that's 246 mils. Charleston is 256. Greenville is 339. Richland County is 448. Same vehicle, if you own it in Ori County, it's going to cost you less because of the tax base that we do have in that regard. So, I mean, we have one of the most tax-friendly elements for our residents in that respect. You know, from a fee standpoint, our existing residents will pay code enforcement if they're making an addition to their home. If they're not making an addition, that's a fee they'll never pay or won't have to pay in that regard. If they go out to eat, they will pay the hospitality fee. They are billed the stormwater fee that everyone on their real estate receives each year in the unincorporated areas. Municipalities charge their own fee and collect that traditionally through their water bills and so forth. If they go to one of our recreation programs, a local resident may pay a recreation fee. They certainly will pay the road fee on their automobile. And if they record an instrument, refinance their home, then they pay a ROD cost. But typically, that's not the bulk of what revenue the fees actually bring in. Our existing residents are subject to impact fees if they build new construction. Now, if their son or daughter builds a home and they didn't have one before, they will pay an impact fee. If they make an addition to their existing home in our current structure, they pay no fee for impact fees. They add a business that potentially could result in an impact fee. From an optional fee standpoint, they do would pay the sales tax based on those elements that are taxable within the tax structure for state of South Carolina. New residents, we think, pay about the same tax. In reality, that may not be the same, may not be the case. Because a new resident is subject to an assessable transfer of interest. So if a new resident comes in and buys a home that's identical to their neighbors, the new resident will pay a higher tax than the resident that was there and stays in their home. Now, some of those new residents thinks that's quite unfair. They think it's unconstitutional, but it's not. That is the rules in the state of South Carolina. So we do have a higher cost that our new residents do bear in that regard. They pay the same thing for their automobiles, campers, boats, and other things. Now, most likely, the home that they built or just built would be subject to code enforcement, impact fees for that new construction. They would pay the same hospitality, stormwater, and other fees in that respect, and the sales tax. Businesses are assessed at 6%. They by design, unfortunately, by design, pay a higher portion of tax relative to the value that they own. They receive no school credits. They pay taxes on their other assets, like autos, and if they have campers or boats, that would be the same. Businesses pay a business license, which residents don't pay. That's an extra cost to them in that respect. And the other fees, if they own those assets or using those services. And businesses would also be subject to impact fees on new construction, but they would also be subject to impact fees on a change in use. So if I have an office building that is being changed to a retail category, or a warehouse that now becomes retail, they are charged an impact fee on that as well. They also are required to collect many of our fees as it relates to hospitality, accommodations, sales tax, and remit those to the state or to the city, county in that respect. So that's something that is imposed upon them. Our tourists, while they don't pay any, a property tax, it's built into the rates that they're paying with their accommodations or that business. So indirectly, they are supporting our property tax system in that regard for those type businesses that are providing services to tourists. They are probably paying the majority of our hospitality and accommodations in that regard. Indirectly, the other fees, impact fees, they don't pay that directly either, but a new business that caters to tourists, certainly is, we're collecting it there. So it's an indirect cost that the tourists are paying. And the transportation sales tax, one of our optional taxes, certainly, I think from the analysis that was done earlier, perhaps as much as 60% or more than 60% is actually paid by our tourists or outside visitors in that regard. So we do have a balance of who pays the fees and the various resources that we use in that regard. Our existing residents, residents are benefited the most and pay the lowest. Our new residents are slightly higher, and our businesses, I think, are probably the higher in terms of relative comparability to the taxes and support they bring to Ori County government for the fees and so forth with the different licenses and such that we collect. So it just gives a perspective there of who is paying our tax and the nature of that. Yes, sir?
ATI impacts existing residents as well if they move, correct?
Yes, an existing resident fee moves up to a larger house or actually moves down to a house. If they're purchasing a house, it is subject to an ATI, yes.
And then, I wonder if, and you may not know the answer to this, like, how much? I imagine ATI is mitigated to some extent by the fact that a lot of new residents are moving into new construction as opposed to existing homes. And do we know the percentage of that?
I don't know if I can quote you a percentage. What we do see is there is a number of existing properties that are transferred every year. That is a high number. That makes our forecasting from a property tax revenue standpoint that much more difficult. Because when billings are made, if you buy a new house or a existing house, it automatically goes to 6% on the tax bill unless you already come in and applied for your primary residence. But they still have time from the time that the bill is done to January 15th to make that application. So we see a large number of houses that are billed at 6% that now become 4% during that process. And I'm thinking that's more in the tens of thousands each year.
Barry, can we back up to where you were explaining that pickup truck that in Greenville was 400 and some mils? What's that money used for? And how does it?
Well, very similar to Ori County in that regard. The millage is made up of each taxing jurisdictions. I did that analysis based on a unincorporated area. So basically have the county millage, the school district millage. It would have most likely a fire-type millage as well. It's just in Ori County, because we have such a high commercial base in our overall tax assessed value, I guess with the right term. We're able to generate the revenue we need at a lower millage rate, whereas in the other areas of the state, they have a higher millage rate. So that same vehicle in one county, even though it's got the exact same market value, the tax is going to be cheaper here than it's going to be in Richland or Greenville or Charleston. So we're very taxpayer-friendly in that respect. One of the biggest issues we're dealing with is the estimated population growth. And I would say the state traditionally has done a forecast through their South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. Currently, the state has adopted the federal census forecast for growth. And for Ori County presently, that is being estimated a growth rate of 2.4% annually. And if we look back over time, on a long-term basis, that probably is consistent with what we have seen over an extended period of time. Where we find ourselves at today is probably about 416,000 residents in Ori County itself, permanent residents. At 2.4% growth in 2030, that becomes 473,000. In 2035, that becomes 533,000. And in 2042, the furthest that is available for forecast is 621,000 residents. So that basically adds another 50% to our existing resident base in that period of time. Now, also look at it from the standpoint of what we've experienced in the last five years. Recognize, however, that one of those years is the 2020 COVID year, and we had very little growth in that respect. That actually, on a five-year average, is 3.34%. And if we use that as our projection forward, that gives us 490,000 in 2030, 578 in 35, and 728,000 in 2042. That's 100,000 people different. If that occurs, that puts greater pressure on us in that regard for dealing with the growth needs that we see today. It really impacts our public safety, but not only public safety, it deals with our road system and the maintenance of that, our stormwater in that respect. But also the things that you see downstairs on the first floor of this organization. Treasurer, auditor, assessor, ROD, code enforcement, and all those things. Don't know which of the two it's going to be, but we're planning, I think, for the blue line in terms of what we're looking at in terms of growth of our employees in that respect, and we'll touch on that in just a moment.
Why are we doing the blue line and not the red line, just out of curiosity?
Well, historically, that extends that growth rate to a longer period of time, not just the last five years. We know that there will be cycles. There will be ups and there will be downs. We have been on a trajectory that has been pretty consistently up, but we do see some potential mitigation or flattening of that in those cycles. So right now, we're looking at that. We'll be prepared for what the real answer is in that respect. Obviously, from a planning standpoint, we're probably at least a year behind till we see what actually has occurred and be able to respond. We have attempted to maintain the current level of services. One of the measurements of that is the number of employees per 1,000 residents in that respect. Currently, we are at 7.92 or just under eight in terms of our employee count at our employees of 3,383 approved positions. That's full-time and part-time. Public safety is 1,905 of that, or just over almost, just less than four and a half per each 1,000 employee residents in that respect. If we use that 2.4% growth rate, in essence, that would get us to, at the end of 2036, 10 years, with adding approximately 91 new positions per year to keep up that measurement. At 4,295 total employees at the end of 10 years, and 2,419 roughly in the public safety side. So now, that's the target that we're looking for and how we can fund that to maintain that level of services. Now, would we always look for innovation in efficiency and effectiveness? Yes. We would expect some fixed costs that we have and be able to leverage that as we move forward to be more efficient in that regard. Where are we at currently with some of our revenue sources? And we'll talk a little bit more about some of these in the coming slides, but real estate taxes. For 2025, we had budgeted an increase of 17%. It came in higher than that on actual. In 2026 budget, we budgeted almost a 6.7% increase. I believe it's going to come in higher than that. For 2027, including what we see in 2026, I think we're looking at about a 10% increase in our property tax revenue. When I made the comment at the beginning of the meeting, that we feel like we will have resources to consider from the standpoint of adding employees and considering a meaningful increase for our employees. That's the primary driver in what we're seeing there. The value of a meal, I think we still are the number-two county in the state. I think Charleston, when I looked at that for last year, was just over $5.3 million in terms of a value of meal. We're predicted to be in 2026 right at $4 million, and 2027 to be almost $4.4 million in terms of value of meal. That's being driven by that large commercial investment along the beachfront and other areas of the county. We have been very judicious in our increases in terms of what is available to us based on the formulas the state provides, which is based on growth in population as well as inflation rate. In '25, we had the ability to raise 15.5 mils, and 14.3 of that rolled forward to the next year. '26, we had the ability to raise 17.5 mils, and 13 mils rolls forward. In 2027, we estimate we will have available to actually increase our millage by 16.1 mils. And 9.5 of that will roll forward to the subsequent year. We're not recommending a millage increase for 2027, so I'll make that clear at the moment. Local government fund, we see the state's forecast would seem to indicate to us that that will increase based on the current formula at 5% cap for 2027. So that's additional resources for us. If I look at some of our economically sensitive revenues, the hospitality, 1 and 1/2% for 2026 actually is flat. It is not showing an increase year-to-date in 2026. Actually, it's a small decrease of .07. So we do see probably that it will be some increase, but not a large increase in the hospitality 1 and 1/2%. Now, we only collect the unincorporated areas, but that in and of itself, we expect to be slightly higher. The hospitality 1%, which is the unincorporated areas, we're up 2.6 already this year. We expect that to grow a little bit, to be just under 3% increase that we will be able to use in 2027 budget. Business licenses are up currently year-to-date 41%. Don't let that percentage mislead you, because really, the money is not due till April and May. What that does indicate is that we have either, and I hadn't looked at this to see, either we have audits that we've collected from individual businesses where they didn't file correctly, or we've had new businesses open that are driving that increase year-over-year through this early part of the year. But we do expect business licenses to be up almost 9%. And recognize that when we're doing a budget, we don't know what the current year's revenue is, and that has increased. So that's reflective of the actual results in 2025. Code enforcement currently is down 11%. We probably expect that for the year to be down by some small amount. ROD is the opposite. Now, normally, you think of those two being very consistent. I build it, I sell it. I build it, I sell it. ROD is actually up at this point in time. Up 9.6%, so overall, we would see that that's probably going to be up by 2 and 1/2 to 3% for the year. Interest earned, I mentioned earlier about the higher rates than we anticipated. We expected rates actually to be down in '25. We expected rates to be down in '26. That did not occur based on the forecast. Currently today, they're up 94%. Again, that's a large number, but it's very early in the year, and some of our maturities of some of those investments may drive that temporarily higher. But we do expect that to be up from a budgetary standpoint by as much as 12, almost 13%. Sales tax right now is essentially flat year-to-year. We expect that probably to be up a little bit in that regard for the transportation tax.
The code enforcement trend versus the registered deed trend would suggest to me that the resale market is thriving and the new home market maybe not so much, but in reality, those are, that's, the opposite is actually the truth. So how, how do you reconcile that?
We need to look at the reasons why a little bit underneath the covers as to what's driving that. We have seen what we thought was somewhat of a slight reduction in the average sales price. Part of our increase in years past has been the higher values. So I don't think it's the value side unless there's some unusually large transactions that are falling into that, which happens from time to time. Some of those large properties do sell and create a very high, high cost to that transaction. But we'll try to look and see if we can determine which element.
It doesn't compute from what I know what the market's doing right now.
Yes, sir. Let's have it out. So just in summary, inflation interest rates, I think, still will be favorable to us, but will have some impact, positive and negative. Labor market's still going to be tight, and that leads us to say that we will still have some vacancy in that regard. We did budget for vacancy in the 2026 budget, and we expect that to continue. Population growth, as we see, we've got the two potential outcomes, but we're planning at least initially on that blue line versus the red line. Our service level, we're projecting that we need to maintain that, and one of the measures is that positions per 1,000 residents that we'll work towards. And revenue trends, we do see property taxes being up, economically sensitive, being a little up and down but somewhat flat. And development-related revenues, I really expect there to be a small decline but not substantial in that regard. We still see a very active market in that respect. And that would lead us to looking at some of our very specific needs related to I and R and public safety. And we'll look at public safety first. And just remind you, this is a map that we included in the spring retreat. And it does reflect that roughly 87% of our population lives in the eastern half of the county. So very dense in that regard. And what you will note is that it's going to drive a lot of our call volume, calls for service in that respect. So when I'm thinking about an ambulance, I want it as close as I can to where those calls are occurring at, and that is driving some of our decisions in that respect. And that is driving some of our decisions in that respect and recommendations. EMS is the first thing I would look at because that's one of my most critical functions in that regard. Because that's life safety at its pure sense. In reality, what we showed you in the spring from 2025, 2024, I believe, the chief shared with us 2025, and the outcomes that we're seeing today are more favorable than this. This chart essentially shows you where the reds are, is where we've exceeded our target capacity. Now, for instance, Myrtle Beach, 21st Avenue, in the second quarter was at a utilization rate of 54%. I believe that's the correct one or 64, 54, I believe is the one there. And that's not a true number because not only are they dealing with that call, but when they get back to the station, they must clean the unit. They must replenish all the supplies that may be used. They must do the paperwork associated with that for billing. So when you're talking about a 54% utilization rate, it's really a higher number than that. So they're getting very little rest on that shift in that regard. But as I indicated to you, what we're seeing in 2025 is more favorable than this because the changes that you already have made, and we'll highlight those in just a moment in terms of adding additional units. The actual call units, and you see the map of where the calls are coming from. Again, it's mostly centered around those population centers that we have, the 501 corridor and the coastal area. 501 corridor obviously has to deal with a lot of the commuting as well as the tourists coming into the area. That's still the primary entry point is Highway 501 for our tourists. What have we done? We've expanded services due to some safer grant funding. We've done the harm reduction team. We've added medics at Long's and Carolina Bays. We've added basic units at Nixonville, Wompah, Shell, at MYR, at the ARF, at Lee's Landing, Pitch Landing, and Allen's. The priorities that we're looking at is Myrtle Beach, 21st Avenue. North Myrtle Beach, or the new name we've added there is Wendy Hill, which kind of puts it in the center of the beach in that regard. Sockistee, Conway, Ocean Bays, Finkley, River Oaks, Highway 707, Highway 501 is where our team is targeting where the next unit should go. We're looking for relocations in a couple of locations to better define that to the call volume. Loris is potentially going to Gore Town, Surfside to Preswick, and Myrtle Beach to Wendy Hill in that regard. One thing that we're looking at from an EMS standpoint is with some of our new stations is actually to implement those and equip those to use more than one unit. So at the Wendy Hill station, it will have at least two bays and may be able to serve as many as four units ultimately. When we look at Myrtle Beach and we do the Olin Blanton renovation, we're looking to have at least capacity for two units at that location. Forest Brook, the older fire station we just replaced, can be refit for EMS. It's still available and usable, that station which already has the staffing facilities there to stay overnight and may be in the EMS unit, station at the moment subsequently after we no longer need it for the 5th precinct in that regard. So we're looking at innovative ways that we can put more units in those areas where the high call volumes are. Looking at waste management, and we'll say we've just got a bid in on the Wompah new fire, new convenience center, and that did come in higher than we had projected. There is an action, I think, that's going to be on your next meeting agenda to consider a transfer of funds to push that forward and get that sooner rather than later. But we have reopened the Arcadian shores. We're looking at the North Myrtle Beach, or now is called Wompah relocation and expansion. We've got a new facility at Highway 9022, an expansion at the landfill. Forest Brook would be a new center that we're looking to acquire the property currently. We're actually have property that's being appraised for acquisition. Cepio Lane and expansion, we think are looking at a contract for that parcel next to us that we can use as an expansion opportunity. We've got defined property for Brooksville. We've already purchased the property for Long's and we are looking for land for other centers as we move forward into the future. Fire station, we have eight volunteer fire stations working today. We depend on our volunteers. They are hugely valuable to the ability for us to provide services. But it is more difficult today than it's ever been to get active volunteers. There's just a cultural change. Young people aren't going into that and the numbers that they have in the past. That perhaps is an opportunity that we need to work harder at in that regard. But over time, as growth is occurring, one of the opportunities we have to consider is what we will call a hybrid schedule. But I would say that schedule is not new. That schedule is already in our employee guidelines. And we actually started fire service in that manner. What that did is we put full-time firefighters in several of the stations and they worked during the day. They worked Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They had the weekends off. When they were not at the station, volunteers who are not on their primary job at that point handled the calls in the evenings, handed the calls on the weekends. So it's very volunteer-dependent in that regard. It still must have those volunteers in place to even consider that. But as we're trying to have a step process to deal with the growth, that's one of the things that we can consider and look at. It's been effective in the past. It's worked well and it could be a way that we transition into this growth response and utilizing that manner. But it still is very dependent on having a very active volunteer group helping to provide those services. So that's still something we've got to look at. One other thing that FIRE has identified to us is that we have a number of spare apparatus. And as we've grown more stations, we've got more spares. We perhaps need somewhere we can better take care of those, keep those out of the weather. They've got things on them that can deteriorate. And when you look at something like a ladder or a tower, very mechanical, it needs to be perhaps in a, under a shelter, not in the open area in that regard. And just recognize, we've implemented a lot. Long's, Forest Brook, Nixonville, Wompah, Shell, Sockistee, University, Ocean Bay Second Crew, our career staff in Little River Second Crew. We're planning on the Finkley, which is under construction at the moment, which is a expansion, but relocation. Preswick, we will have a ribbon cutting on that, groundbreaking in the near future. We've got Gore Town expansion that's being designed. Cepio Ladder Staffing, which is part of the Safer Grant, accounts will prove. We're looking at new stations, areas where growth is occurring. Bay Road, our fire training relocation. Red Bluff is a rebuild and Maple as an expansion in that respect. J. Reuben Long is one of the big unknowns that we mentioned in our 2026 budget. We have a little more definition of that because we have a draft report from our consultant. What we would share with you, however, though, is probably appropriate and needful that our public safety committee take this up at their next meeting and meet with that consultant, hear their recommendations in that regard and try to help us come with a decision and a path forward in that regard. The consultant has shared with us multiple opportunities. One of the big drivers is what is the population going to be in the future at J. Reuben Long? Today, I think they're somewhere in the 850, 863 actually was the average population currently in 2025. The projected population they'll have to serve in 2030 is 1,000. In 2035 is almost 1,150. 2040 is 1,300 is the projected number. And that's again, just showing a growth rate. What you need to be remembering is that there is a lot of requirements for separation of inmates. First, there's gender, big requirement. I can't mix that in the same cell unit. There's issues with age. Certain ages have to be separated. So even though I've got a pod of perhaps 12 or 24 different cells, if there's only two people in it, I can't add anybody else if they don't meet that age requirement. There's issues of gang affiliation or co-defendants in the same event. May have to be separated as well. So our consultant is using a factor of about 18%. Additional capacity has to be over these numbers. So what we have to have capacity to do to meet those separation requirements is more than the numbers that you see there today. The study looked at and emphasized a few things. One is the bowtie building is reaching its end of life. All those critical functions in terms of plumbing, electrical, heating and air in that regard, sewer, are all reaching their end of life. And we have to come up with some action plan to be able to deal with that issue. Medical care is changing dramatically and the demands of that medical care are a part of the recommendation they will make. So the first phase of their recommendation is to build a new housing unit of about 318 beds, which would include an appropriate medical facility within that and female housing. And that cost, based on their projections, about $90 million. They've given options for renovating the bowtie, but recognize you have to have some place for those people to go to before you can renovate one or both of those facilities in step or simultaneously. To renovate, they've estimated somewhere in the $33 million range. To replace, it's anywhere from $84 to $102 million. Big numbers. So I think for council to look at that, hear what the consultants have to say, come up with a recommendation, I think is very appropriate. And we will begin those implementations into 2027, perhaps to design it. 2028 to actually implement and construct it in that regard. We do have a $60 million placeholder in our CIP in 2027. But any of those choices are going to be more than what we have set aside at the moment from a debt capacity perspective. So we will look for innovative ways to try to bring you a recommendation in that regard. Police, what we've done with the 5th precinct has made a dramatic change in the services that our team can provide. It basically is helping every sector of the county from the standpoint of having a better response when that is implemented. As we look forward, though, if we add another 100,000 people, we've got to add greater resource in that regard. Could it mean a 6th precinct? Yes, the real priority is to have people on the street, in that car, servicing the customers, answering those calls. So to the extent we can do that in a creative manner, bricks and mortar may not be the best question, answer in that regard. But no, we have to have resources and meeting space, administrative space for the things that our police are doing. So we'll have to evaluate that in the plan that we're looking at. Also, I think on the animal care center, we do have the clinic projected, I think, for 2027. That's something that we will look at and may need to expand a little bit from what we estimated earlier. And certainly, I think we'll increase our staffing model there as well. Infrastructure regulation, we'll be dealing with the same issues that Public Works is doing or, excuse me, Public Safety is doing. We've added land at Privates Road and we're currently working on bidding the complex expansion. We've just finished the large office and warehouse type units, shop area, which is in the bottom right-hand corner. That is in implementation and use today. I think Public Works needs a new central substation. Could be on the property we purchased there on Highway 90. Also, in consideration of that is a fleet expansion to have a potential quick service area closer to where our vehicles are at, the majority of our vehicles. So they don't have to travel as far, lose as much staff time in getting those services done on a regular basis. Recreation, we've made a major investment there with Aner, Green Sea Floyds, Loris. We have major expansions at Sockistee, Carolina Forest Land, Stalby Creek, Burgess, Forest Brook, additional beach bathrooms, recreational offices, and accessible playgrounds. And one of the big things for INR is Ride Four. Implementing that program that our taxpayers approved in that regard.
Sorry, Barry, if you could just touch on what the expansions in the rec department are briefly.
Well, the first one is, the big expansion is their offices. If you remember, they were at the Cochran School. Currently, they are using space at the records building that was available. We have purchased property there on 701, not far from Privates Road. And that will be upfitted for their needs in that area and I think give them ample administrative and staging areas to be able to service all of the areas we have. Much of our recreational needs are being funded by the impact fees. So that's somewhat, I won't say a limiter necessarily, but certainly it drives what we can do and what order and what timing in that regard for the parks.
What I'm asking is, I know we're putting up three new centers.
Yes.
Correct? But what are, what are the, what are the expansion on Sockistee and Carolina Forest look like? Are they just fields?
David, could you?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Sockistee is currently an expansion of fields and footsoil ports, I believe, as well. The Carolina Forest is an expansion of fields. It's the development of that property around the current recreation center and the soccer multi-use fields.
What are you, what's your timeline on those?
And pickle, and pickleball at Sockistee. I know we're putting pickleball at, at South Strand. And I think there's pickleball at Sockistee as well. As far as, what was your question?
I guess like the top five items there, what are your timeline?
Timeline, Aner Rec is in, should be approaching the end of its permitting process. It is, all the permits have been submitted, application have been submitted, so we're waiting on those. Green Sea Floyds is probably six to eight months behind that. That's, and I'm looking at John for confirmation. But there, the Loris Recreation Center is the same, it's the same building as the previous two, but they will, that is, it is very site-dependent. We, it has been, it has been a very difficult challenge to find the right property in that area. So we're still, we just, we've evaluated several. We just had the last one sort of identify some issues with it last week, I think. So that's been a struggle. The Sockistee Recreation is an expansion that's funded primarily by the state. The state grant that we were able to get. Carolina Forest Expansion, like I said, is the, are those park, I'm sorry, those recreation fields. Stalby Creek Park, Burgess, Forest Brook Park. I'd have to get somebody else to come up and talk about those in detail.
I just know our constituents are, my constituents are going to ask me, they already are asking me, like, what's the deal with the fields? When will they be completed? I'm just trying to get an idea of what are we looking at timeline-wise for those major projects?
Yes, sir. The field lines around, the fields around, John, if you would.
Yeah, it's still in master planning, so.
Nine years, two years, three years?
We're probably two years away from fields showing up.
Okay.
And the, the playground there that's being replaced as well.
Yeah.
What is that timeline?
Yeah, that's currently.
That's happening now.
Happening now, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, David. The general side is experiencing similar challenges in that regard. We've looked at a lot of the renovations, as we've called them, to extend the life of our existing facilities because that's much less expensive than trying to replace them. Olin Blanton renovation is currently ongoing. The Elm Street is in process as well. Historic Courthouse, I think, is in design. Records expansion is right at completion, I believe, very close. The JP Stevens Complex replacement, we're still working on the land element in Loris. That's been more of a challenge on multiple fronts there. Central Coast Complex is nearing completion in that regard as a new facility, which will be a joint facility with police, courts, as well as our general services, treasurer, auditor, probate, clerk of court, assessor, those type things. We're looking at the Sanders renovation, it's adjacent to the Second Avenue Annex, which is now essentially full. I think with the occupancy of the second floor, with the solicitor, as well as the sheriff's office, expanding into those areas. Sanders, we're looking at, we had budgeted for renovation, but we are looking at it to see if it needs to be a replacement instead of having a two-story building and a one-story building that's beside it. Should we consider a four-story building? Should we consider a four-story building and go ahead and build that extra capacity that we're going to need down the line in that respect? So that's still a decision that'll come before council and just normal life cycle there. Behavioral Services, we're looking at as to what the needs of the community are and where they should be located in that regard. We will need to expand our radio tower system. There's already calls for the loans area. As development enhances itself and gets more prolific in a general area, the signal quality is degraded just because of the number of structures, the growth of trees and vegetation of those areas. We just focused on having one in the Cool Springs area, adding that tower to deal with the issues we were experiencing, the western part of county, as well as their Arcadian. At the Galleria Shopping Center, adding a tower there to deal with all of the Arcadian, all the way from essentially northern Myrtle Beach, all the way through Barefoot Resort and those areas where we were seeing signal challenges there. At the airport, we've got the terminal expansion underway. We've just completed the rental car facilities, additional parking expansion. We have the runway reconstruction, which we're currently working on. We will be looking at a TSA expansion, renovation on the first floor to be able to push more people through that in our peak season in that regard. And we're reaching the time now that we will have to do life cycle maintenance on those passenger bridges. We just purchased the ones for the new expansion. We have spare parts and those type things, but they're reaching end of life. So each one of those, I think, is about a million two in today's dollars. So that's a big thing we'll be looking at perhaps in the five to ten-year range, going back to Terminal B and the existing As over time in that respect. So a lot of needs and opportunity there to deal with the growth. We looked at the actual people in that regard for public safety. Again, it's about ninety-one new positions per year to maintain that current ratio we have, which should be impacted by efficiencies and different options that we have. I will say, when we asked Public Safety what they needed, their request is double that. That's not a problem. I mean, they're trying to deal with where they see deficiencies at today and where they see needs of the organization for special teams for traffic. I mean, all those elements that they're having to deal with.
Where's the biggest shortfall, police or fire EMS?
It deals with both. They're very similar in terms of what they've asked for. There's not one that stepped out ahead of the other in that regard. And I think the real question is, you know, is it two-point-four percent growth or is it three-point-five percent growth? And that's going to be a big determinant factor, how quickly those needs will be there. I will let you know, currently we have three hundred and twenty-three vacancies in the county. So we're not able to fill the jobs that we have today in that respect. It's a challenge that all of our team here work at on a daily basis.
How many of those are in the public safety section?
I would say, I would just guess, it probably, it's about fifty, sixty percent of those positions probably in public safety because that's the number of positions they have. You know, we still see position openings in terms of heavy equipment operators and trades workers, but to a lesser degree, but it's in nine-one-one, it's in police, it's in fire rescue, as probably our three big ones, and detention. Now, where we see ourselves going in twenty-seven, you know, we'll be dealing with employee compensation. We will do our GL bond issues and I think that second hospitality bond, we expect to be issued in twenty-seven, that council's already approved, designing the detention center once a decision has been made embedded by council and considering that local option sales tax as one way to diversify and potentially with the burden we know is out there, how can we best pay for that? And we'll go through a couple of options in that regard, but that's one of the things we may need to consider and continuing our effort for road funding for Ride Four, all those projects that we have on the table and we still need the outside funding to assist us in that regard in twenty-eight. Will be very, twenty-nine will be similar. Probably the big change there is the construction and staffing of the detention center because not only is it a construction issue, but when you increase that bed capacity, there will be a staffing element associated with that. We did get the staffing study back and that the association of county does for us and it appears that, you know, we're somewhere in the range of twenty to thirty correction officer positions short of what the recommendation is. We do have some of our areas that we're not using, which kind of offsets that a little bit, but as we look forward into twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, we'll be trying to close that gap as well. Now, funding opportunities, one of the things we have certainly is our ability to raise taxes. That's our least desirable option in that regard. We do need to end, we do need to redo our impact fee report and study. That is something that council will need to take action on if those funds are going to continue. There is a life of that report and we would need to take action on that probably within the next six months, year?
Yes, sir.
In that regard. From the standpoint of our tax base and our growth in real estate, we see over the last eight years, we have averaged an increase in our tax base of just over seven percent. What I shared with you earlier, we're looking at for twenty twenty-six probably and twenty twenty-seven, that that's going to grow almost ten percent. So we are seeing the impacts to our tax base with the growth that is occurring. We're seeing more of the commercial side coming on. As you probably drive around the county, you will see those impacts as well. We will utilize and leverage that growth as much as possible so that we're not having to deal with any potential impact to our millage, though we have a very large ability to raise mills. Just remind you of a couple of things that are coming to a change that will benefit us. We do have roughly in that twenty-eight, twenty-nine timeframe, the Air Force Base Tax Accrement Financing District will terminate. That will give the county an additional three-point-seven million dollars recurring revenue per year. That's essentially almost or just less than one mill where we are today. It won't happen in twenty twenty-seven. It'll be perhaps, I don't know if it's twenty-eight, twenty-nine, as we move forward of that. The BNC Martha County Business Park will also terminate about the same timeframe, but the county will only receive a small amount extra at that point in time. The city is really the big beneficiary of that termination, but we'll have another five hundred thousand dollars. So the sum of those two essentially is equal to a mill increase in revenue, recurring revenue that we'll receive with the termination of those agreements. This last slide, well, not next to this last slide, the three words I got written at the top of the page that you don't see is, Ori County is blessed. We have experienced growth beyond what we expected in that regard. If you look at the period from two thousand twenty-one to twenty-five, our fund balance in the general fund has increased from essentially ninety-seven million to what was reflected to you earlier of two hundred and three million. Granted, some of that is in our reserves, which we do by formula, it's a percentage of the next year's budget in that regard, but unassigned fund balance essentially is what we have that's at the discretion of council that we can use for multiple funds. That has grown from seven million dollars in twenty twenty-one to where it stands at the end of twenty twenty-five of just over sixty-nine million dollars. Can that money assist in some of the capital projects that we're looking at? Yes, it can. I would say the biggest driver in that has been revenue exceeding its budget on an annual basis. In twenty twenty-one, that was twenty-one million. In twenty twenty-two, that was seventeen million, sixteen million in twenty-three, nineteen million in twenty-four, and in twenty twenty-five, that's twenty-five million dollars. Now, that increase over budget is spread out over multiple types of revenue, but I would say almost fifty percent of that has been property taxes in that regard, with the drivers being real property and vehicle taxes in that respect. Interest during this period of time, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, has been a big driver. Rates were higher. Our treasurer team has really come to the table and has added a lot of value in a number of our funds, including the general fund. Our growth in unassigned, you can see, really correlate very closely to our excess revenues. We do have expenditure savings each year, but you may remember, a number of those do roll forward each year if they don't get spent. So some of that is obligated on the expenditure side. And in twenty twenty-five, we actually made a change in our budget policy and we're beginning to use some of those expected vacancy variance and those type things as a means to leverage and increase our budget efficiency in that respect. So we obligated about ten million dollars of that. We've also added in our commitment to workforce housing in that respect and we have about two-point-six million over the last two years set aside in that regard. Multiple things that council can consider. I mean, we are so blessed, is, there's a possibility we could return some of that to our taxpayers if council so choose. We obviously, we always would suggest that we be conservative in that regard because we know the demands that are in front of us in that respect. But if we looked at the value of a mill and tried to return that over three years, that's about twelve to fourteen million dollars and that still would leave sixty or fifty-five million in the unassigned fund balance that could address those other issues if council would desire for us to consider that in the budget process.
Mr. Chairman, taking into account what staff has presented with the general fund analysis and fund balance, I'd like to throw out on the table for council to consider, consider a one-mill decrease in millage over the next three years, totaling three mills in total.
Second.
I think that's a great idea. And that's kind of what you were just alluding to, isn't that right, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. I would say that is, we asked the question, has this happened before in the state of South Carolina? Nobody can answer that question. They're not aware that it's happened in the state of South Carolina.
Ori County leads the way in South Carolina.
Yes, sir.
That's why we are the independent republic.
That's right.
Now, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What Tyler's suggesting is great, but we do have a need to make sure our public safety, you know, retention, you know, the pay scale.
Yes, sir.
You know, we need to consider that before we're doing anything. We need to continue to raise that bar.
Yes, sir. We would consider the money, like I said, unassigned fund balance to be more of a nature of one-time funds. For recurring salaries and stuff, we would want to match that with recurring funds in that year. So that's a challenge we still have to, to take care of, no doubt, and we desire to take care of. But we would look to match that with recurring funds versus one-time.
Everything, everything helps.
Yes, sir.
And that's a good point, Mr. Howard. I think that that's what the administrator was alluding to earlier, that we would be conservative in what we do. And we're not doing anything today. We're just doing something that's never been done before and I think we can do it. Mr. Servant, we're working hard on it. And if we'd have done this in the past, we might have been at zero instead of in the plus. So if we're going to be in the plus next year, there's no need to raise taxes. And if we can do it without raising taxes, can we do it and give some back? Mr. Servant, go ahead.
I think that's a hundred percent correct. And I think what Barry said, Ori County being blessed, is a hundred percent correct. I think with the population growth that we're seeing, people want to be in South Carolina and specifically they want to live in Ori County. And tourism has been a big driver as well. But, I mean, looking back in two thousand and three, I believe that was the year we raised taxes. Barry, is that correct?
Twenty-three, you mean? Yes, sir.
And since then, we've seen exponential growth in our unassigned fund balance, something that staff at that time could not have predicted. And at this point in time, with the excess that we do have, I think it's incumbent upon us since we are running efficiently to give money back to the taxpayers and reduce taxes. I think that's something that all, we all up here when we ran for office campaigned on and something that we should be proud of and be able to deliver to residents of Ori County. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And to Bill's point, if we do this the right way, it won't eliminate our ability to continue to address the needs that growth are going to bring. It's just going to flatten out the fund balance on a year-over-year basis.
I think if you listen, go back and listen to what Barry was saying, next year, we're going to see another ten percent increase in revenue and property taxes in twenty twenty-six. I mean, so I mean, the people are still moving here. And so I think we're able to address the concerns as it relates to public safety salaries as well as salaries all across the board with the amount of revenue increase that we're seeing. I think what it's showing you, if you go back to the slide that shows what an actual value of a mill is, that just goes to show you the growth that we're seeing.
I think it's doubled in the last five years.
I mean, so a value of a mill back in twenty twenty-three was three million dollars roughly, three million forty thousand dollars. The value of a mill in twenty twenty-seven is going to be four-point-three-seven million dollars. And you combine that with the population growth and the amount of tourism growth that we've seen, I think we have a unique opportunity that no other county government has in South Carolina. And it's because of two things. We're running efficiently and we're blessed with a lot of economic growth and it provides us that unique opportunity to reduce taxes and be one of the first counties in state history to be able to do it.
I'd like to be the first county in South Carolina to have the best retention for public safety than any other county. We're not up there in that league.
I don't know how we compare it with other counties, Bill, but I don't think there's anybody up here on this dais that doesn't believe what you just said. And every single year, if you look at our budgets, we've been raising salaries. I think to a certain extent, when you get an organization as large as ours, with adding the amount of employees that we add, we're going to have a certain amount of vacancy variance, no matter what. Life happens. I mean, I deal with it in my firm. Families have kids, people retire, people move because of life circumstances with families, you're just going to have vacancy variance. So, and I think Barry will attest to that too, in what you're seeing at a staff level.
Without a doubt. I will say two other things. One column I don't have on here is twenty twenty-six. And we do expect that revenue from real property is going to be higher than what we have in the budget. We do expect interest to be higher than what we have in the budget as well. I can't tell you what that's going to be at the moment. As we move forward, we obviously will have some vacancy variance in that respect, but the second thing I want to say is the results that you're seeing is because of these guys and all of these guys and their teams. They have made it happen.
Barry, quick question. The local option sales tax, that would, certainly that would help with retention rates, would it not?
The local option sales tax has two components. One is a property tax credit that will be available to all property taxes and include every property, including the municipalities in that regard. And twenty-nine percent of the revenue collected would go into a pot for additional recurring used by each of the governments. It would be divided between the municipalities and the county. It is no restrictions to it from the standpoint of, like, impact fees, it's got to be used for A, B, C, and D, it's unrestricted in that regard. It can go for salaries and if we adopted it, I mean, public safety would be our primary objective, no doubt.
So that would, that would help with this.
Yes.
Some of the concerns that Bill has.
Yeah, it'd be one of the vehicles that we could help deal with this growth and have someone else contribute to that, mainly the tourist.
That's what I was going to say, because the tourists pay a substantial amount.
Yes. Now, each of us would pay it as well, no doubt, but I won't say that solves all of our issues. That would go a long way towards dealing with the growth. We probably also have to look at other considerations as well.
Thank you. And if that's successful, you're just kind of stacking wins.
Oh, yeah. All I heard was cut taxes and let tourists pay for our public safety.
I can't guarantee all.
We're moving in the right direction. Thanks to everybody here that's doing all this hard work.
I'd like to agree to one thing, that these are the people who make it happen.
Amen.
We're just here, they're doing the work. Y'all, I've always known, y'all have been wonderful in how you've looked at.
And I've, and I've watched our staff, and I've, and I've watched our staff change. And, and they're not saying it's overfining fault. I personally think that we're at the best position currently than we've ever been. And I think it has a lot to do with the, with the faith and the, and the hard work and with good leadership of this council and yourself. Because I'm hearing words like blessing, family, and God, and team, and ethically, and helping, and public servants, good morals, character, and prayer. Now, the good book says, says that the fool has said in his heart that there is no God. Also says, without a vision, that the people perish. And we seem to have a vision now, more than ever. And I think it's, I know it's because of your leadership.
This team.
Your team's leadership and all these good folks that work for Ore County. And we are public servants, we work for you all, and we work for the citizens here. And within the day and age that we are living in, it is refreshing for me to hear these good things and these good words. We are blessed, we are blessed county. And there's one little request, and so I made it to the chairman, from now on, when you post that team ore, could you put in real small, AA, at the bottom of it? That's my trademark, so I came up with that.
Yes, sir.
Great job by everybody, y'all are doing a good job, and so if y'all just hang in there, keep it up, and we're going to move forward. And so we're going to have some bumps in the road.
Yes, sir.
But we're doing a great job for everybody.
Last thing I'll just remind you of, we have a lot of opportunities in front of us, and we will work to address those in the most efficient manner in that regard and balance that. We know there are several things we have in our CIP that are reflected here. There are several things that are not in our CIP that are reflected here as well. The detention center, the rural civic center, RJ Corman, we heard about that potential need this morning, that we may need to fund a match there. Paving at different places, the Little River waterfront, we have funded that. But I suspect the more money we could put there, the more impact that's going to have if there's funding available. James Fraser Meeting Room, we need more space at that, as similar to what we're going to do at the other facilities. Police firing range, animal care, an auditorium, Olympic competition pool, coroner's office, remote site for public works, turn lanes at some of our school-type properties. Crisis homeless shelter, something that's not in our community. And, and we as a group with the municipalities perhaps need to address, can we address that? And how can we address that? Family Justice Center, domestic violence shelter is going to need a little bit more money and some operating consideration. Increases in probate, IT security. Preswick Fire Station, CPO, police, nine-one-one, behavioral services, heavy equipment operators, the airport. There's going to be a constant need and constant request to try to grow and address those issues at a service level. But we will approach those very systematic and come back with the best recommendation we can.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
There is no executive session tonight. Mr. Servant wanted to direct the staff.
Yeah, I just made a motion earlier, just try to get a consensus on this council to direct staff to move forward with a plan to reduce millage and mill for the next three years.
Second.
I concur.
So can you board with the opposition to that? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any who oppose? I didn't think so. All right, we got three action items we're going to move into. First one is the Resolution R one forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, the Resolution of Support for the Updated Strategic Plan and the Adoption of the Updated Mission, Mission, Vision, and Values of Ore County Governor. Motion?
So moved.
Second. We heard a wonderful presentation about this earlier, I hope somebody has any additional questions, if they don't, we put it to a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that carries. Next is Resolution R one fifty-one twenty twenty-five, a resolution adjusting the millage rate for the Eagle Trade Special Tax District and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, section one and four, so as to reduce various revenues and expenditures, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
We'd love to give you a little explanation there.
I think we need it.
This is one of our local subdivisions, a very small subdivision, I think there's fifty-two total lots within it. They are similar to what we have in other older subdivisions in that they did not build their roads to county standards, and they were never turned over to the county. Their roads are in very challenging condition. They approached the county with a desire to consider the special tax district. They adopted it in not a referendum standpoint, they actually had sufficient owners actually sign the petition, which is one of the other provisions of how it could be set in place. And that was moving forward into the twenty twenty-six year and did get billed at the millage that was in the ordinance approved by council. We held a meeting of the commission and the community, very close to the community, they're actually next door to it. There's some uncertainty, I guess it would be a term that I would use as to how this all works. I think now that they finally got their tax bills and they understood, whoa, what did I agree to? And I understand that, I mean, it's a big number for them. And Mr. Mastarelli, Councilman Mastarelli, that's his district, based on the comments they were getting at that meeting, he wanted the community to reconfirm their desire to have that put in place. So we are scheduling a meeting for the entire community in January where they can come do an informal poll. It's not a binding poll, but each of the property owners can come and say, yes, I want this. I do suspect at that meeting, there is a small element of people opposed to it, and they were very vocal, and they kind of swayed the overall group in that regard, but this would give a true indication from the property owners of their support. So our recommendation is that we essentially move that millage to zero for twenty twenty-five tax year, which would keep it, the special tax district in place. They have this poll, based on that outcome, either we'll move forward with that next year with the first billing, which would just delay their project a little while, or if they truly are opposed to it, then we would take the action through county ordinance to unwind it.
Would it not, and I don't want to step in, in an area that is not mine per se, but would it not make sense to unwind it and just do it through the normal ballot referendum process? Is that even a possibility?
We've been through all that.
Yeah.
Mr. Jordan.
Okay.
Mistress Spivey, and that committee, based on everybody there, we kind of pulled them back, said, here's what we could do. They were all like, okay, that's probably the fair thing to do, so. We went that route because, and a person you know personally, of course, they're anti-that, but that was as small as Mr. Spivey said, very vocal few people, but the vast majority initially adopted it and are now at points like, okay, let's, let's just take a step back, rethink this poll, and if that's what we decide to do, then we move forward. So, and it gives us the time to give them some new numbers. So it was fair to everybody.
Excuse me, our challenge there is the timing, because tax bills are due January fifteenth.
Sure.
So if we don't take action now to reduce it, then we would not be able to terminate it.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not suggesting we don't take this action, I'm just curious if the longer term. Solutions on the other ones.
Anybody else have any questions? Are you none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that carries unanimously. And finally, we have first reading of ordinance one oh five dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance to amend section twelve point five dash one fourteen, Article Four, Business License of Chapter twelve point five of the Ore County Code of Ordinances so as to update the latest standardized business licenses class schedule, motion?
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Couple of years ago, the municipalities got together and matched up all the business licenses, is this following in their stead case?
This is a continuation of that same effort.
Make it uniform.
It was led by the state, more of a push down from the top that the municipal association did lobby to try to mitigate, there's several counties in the state that do have business licenses as well, Ore County is one of those. But this puts a consistent rate schedule in every jurisdiction, so if a particular business, you just pick any of it, a heating and air type provider, repair service, they will be the same rate if they operate in Ore County and Model Beach. Same rate class, excuse me, it's not the same rate, because each government sets their own cost side, how that's found. But they'll pay the same rate schedule in Anderson, in Greenville, in Charleston, and in Ore County.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Are you none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that carries unanimously. And we finished early, I think we did a great job, I think staff did a great job. This is a wonderful day in Ore County, as it always is. If anybody has anything else they want to say, now's the time to do it, Mr. Mastarelli?
Mr. Spivey, what was the next five-year growth rate population tag, I'm trying to find it real quick, proper, and I'd like to see it, I hope you remember off the top of your head.
Yes, sir, we're four hundred and sixteen thousand people today, and in twenty-fourteen. We find it real quick.
Twenty forty-two, six hundred and some thousand people. Bill, that was.
No, I'm talking about the next five years. Yeah, if you had to break it down, five.
There'll be four hundred and seventy-three thousand, so we'd add almost fifty thousand people.
That's crazy.
Three, three and a half percent growth rate.
Yeah, two point four percent is what there is.
Something I wanted to just point out, when Mr. Spivey put up the numbers of the amount of people incarcerated in our detention center, in a five-year period, it's estimated to go up by a hundred and thirty-seven people. That's a sixteen percent increase in people incarcerated in our prison in Ore County. That's, that's enormous, and that's something to be rather alarmed about. But that's just the people that we're catching and incarcerating. That doesn't mean the numbers that are, that are getting away with what they're doing. So any thought of scaling back our, our police department, and keep in mind the people that are moving here, a lot of retirees, they're good people. We don't, I don't think we have criminals saying, hey, let me go to Myrtle Beach and buy a house and, and set up. They're showing up here because there's vulnerability. So I just want you to keep in mind that's that number, that we really need to increase the boots on, on the street. When you got over a five-year period projected almost seventeen percent increase in people in your prison, that's an alarming number.
Nobody, I don't recall anybody suggesting scaling back.
I didn't say that anybody said they weren't, I'm just, just putting that out there, that we really got to keep focus on the amount of people we have on the street here.
No, our plan is to. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, I, I think what we're, what we're talking about today with the millage decrease and potential local option sales taxes that would be concentrated in the public safety sector, we are, we are giving back to the taxpayer while at the same time addressing growth within those departments to help address the growth within the community, so I, I think this is a way to, to basically serve both masses.
Absolutely, what the plan is to hire ninety-one people every year while this growth is going on, and not charge the taxpayers any extra money to do it.
I think it's important to know that detainees or people that are arrested, and the municipalities also go to our prison too. And some of them are tourists.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Unfortunately.
And some of them don't, we talked about it the other day, some of them don't necessarily need to be in jail.
Some of them don't need to be, and that's another thing that's going to be part of this, is it puts some money in the home detention program, because a lot of these guys are non-mild offenders, they just can't afford bail. So can we do something where they can afford to pay for a GPS or a home detention? We have an excellent home detention center here in Ore County. Again, we got Ore County staff doing great things, and it's much cheaper than building a hundred and five million dollar building to put these people in, so. That's part of what we're moving for.
Prevention is worth a pound of cure.
Absolutely.
The more people we have, that we can keep that number down, the better we'll all be.
Anybody else, Mr. Servant?
Look for cool, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. DeSpada, this concludes the business of the county for today.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.